Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will everyone rise in a solid line to join us as we say the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we have a full agenda missing. All persons in the count. I would like to move up our cul-de-sac conversation.
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen to a much higher number. If possible, put it on right after the consent agenda.
Okay.
And we were getting Mr. Anderson on the move. He's going to drive afterward, as we're guessing. So we could call that one, I guess. Move everything else down a notch. Does anyone else have anything, any additions that they'd like to get through? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with that one change.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda, on the motion?
I'll second.
Kurt, on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At our session, our special meeting session, we, among the topics was our evaluation and goals for the superintendent. And we had a brief discussion and not having any other input from the board members at that meeting, I put a synopsis together which I'd like to share with the board and eventually with Vivek and I guess about Beth's eval for their consideration. We met on the sixteenth of July and to discuss goals for the superintendent for the seventeen, eighteen year school year and the evaluation of the outcomes. The goals were listed as follows: educator effectiveness and student success, OPEB, creating documents for rental policies, fundraising procedures, and personal development. At that time, the superintendent went through each and every of the bullet points and looks like has a copy of such here, letting us know how she achieved each individual goal. At that time, we had reviewed it and it was every, it was the boards, without voting on it, was their acquiesce that we approved her goals and her outcome. And at this time, I'd like anybody who wants to weigh in on it to do so, otherwise this will be our written document. And I will eventually pass something around where we can at least initial that we've had a copy of it and we're for the most part okay with it. So you just want to take a minute to review it. If you're comfortable with it.
I think we're in agreement that the documents for rental policy and stuff, that was still in process, was it not?
They are. You know, the rental policy itself has been updated and changed. It's some of the big pieces are like the nonprofits, you know, looking at cost of the CCC, what it costs to keep it open and the nonprofits that are using that building. So there's definitely some tweaking that needs to happen. That can be an ongoing process. You can make that next year's goal to continue or you could, at least we have policies now. You know, we didn't even have anything prior.
Going forward, that, are we going to see those soon, the policies on the nonprofits, those for rental?
Yeah, we just set a meeting, Jake and I, Jerry is aware too. It kind of gets touchy, is it facilities, you know, which committee does it necessarily belong to? Dave's involved in it. You know, it's just normally a building like that would be shut down in the summer and right now we're running air conditioning and things like that in those buildings. Although we very much appreciate the Shepherd Center and some of the buildings, or the building occupants in there, those are the kind of things we need to look at. And Jerry, you've been a big part of that, those conversations. So the last step in this is figuring out what we want to do with those organizations. Because right now, I think we've got everything else better in mind at least. Still some tweaking that needs to happen.
And again, by initially, we just, we have some time constraints on evaluations and goals that we need to achieve. And as a matter of fact, today is our last day of some achievement today.
The only other one that isn't done is the OPEB. The first step was getting it into teacher contract language, that sunset clause. So that first step is done, but now we'll need to move into the next few.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, reports and communication. Does anyone have any committee reports that they'd like to share with us?
Are we going back to the goals on that too? For next year or are we not doing the goals?
I don't think we're goals. Yeah, I was somewhat confused. I called Jerry today to say we're goals discussed as a deadline.
Yeah, and part of, I have a half of my part that I was asked to do.
Okay.
And I can explain it later. And it's been timed.
We need to get them down, I think, by, for the first meeting of our new school year, I think.
Okay, I decided twenty eighteen, nineteen goals on there. So I didn't know if we're going to discuss the goals that we talked about.
Reports and communication?
The Goodyear County District met and they, we went over some of their, their building is having some, there's some minor cracks in the flooring and some minor dents in the doors that aren't on the, aren't on the side that should, you know, where that would warrant with normal wear and tear. And then they are having a big problem with their loading dock. When they got put in, it was, they didn't have the railing over the top and so then they had to put it in after the cement was poured, which has now caused cracking and stuff. So they are fighting that. We gave them the go-ahead to fight that and to get that repaired at no cost to us. So, because that should be under warranty, that should not crack like that after two years.
I talked to Kevin.
Yeah.
Facility director.
Yeah.
He said he, perhaps the building was going to show ahead. Those are the issues.
Yeah. So, so that's what they're working on right now, trying to figure out what's going on. We did ask them to just go ahead and fill the cracks in the floors instead of doing any kind of redoing them because the school's not that old, so.
Oh, there's that building now, three years?
Three, yeah. But they wanted to fix the ceiling, that, where it's on the floor is where like the tiles meet. So they just wanted to fill those cracks so that they're not going to give any lifting, which would cause, I don't know anything about these things, so I'm just taking their word for it as far as like the flooring, but she's talking about lifting so that they don't like, the corners don't start to lift and if they start, it sort of becomes a tripping hazard.
Is that what my jacket is or?
They're, yeah, they're just talking about filling, like putting a filling, because it's, they're just separating and it's just a, it's like a solid line across settling, I'm sure it's caused. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else up in committee meeting you had to report on?
Transportation met this morning and we had four items on the agenda. We tasked Andy the issue with buying news vans instead of going new to save on the budget because we'd reduced their budget. And he has bought so far two twenty twelve budget vans. And he spent, I think, seventeen thousand. He's got one more he needs to buy. His budget is twenty-five-five. So he's pretty confident he can hit the goal and stay at it, which was our challenge issue for him.
I guess I told him he couldn't do it, but he.
That helps him. When he says you can't do it.
So you can't do that.
Yeah, so he steps up. He sold the bus, the vans got five hundred dollars each, but this will put us into a good rotation. We won't need them for the full timeframe when they get put back into the cycle, but we could use them longer. He's getting them fairly new for a decent price. The supply budget, that's something I've been, I'm going for, it started last year, wasn't it? Eighteen months ago, where to understand the supply budget better from transportation, all the parts where they go, which buses, and getting that more into control. So they've been keeping track of that for the last eighteen months and actually they're going to be coming in. And the parts or supplies, ten thousand on their budget, they're using that though for the fuel. So they're right on the numbers as far as the parts as well, which that's down quite a bit from the year before. So by tracking, we actually have been able to reduce some of this. The fall routes were still ten. They've tried to reduce the routes or tried to change them. Ten is ten. There's nothing we can do about it.
Still got to get all four corners.
Yep. And the last one which was brought up is Andy advertised a twelve hundred dollar retention bonus for drivers who drove a morning to night route for the whole year would get twelve hundred dollars. And he wanted to make it crystal clear, that's coming out of his budget, out of his profits, not out of the school district. We're not paying it, we're not associated with it. It's just what he's trying to do to get drivers to stay a whole year and to drive consistently. And he said if you do either one route in the morning or an afternoon, you could get a six hundred dollar retention, but this is all his profit that he's going to use for this, so.
And we just wanted it really to be clear to all of you because there is some misunderstanding out there. I mean, we can't just be giving employees bonuses and things like that, whether it's a retention bonus or whatever it is. So just want to make it clear that Andy runs SafeLink. It is a different company. It isn't the school, even though they're driving for the school system.
It's for our employees.
They're not our employees. The bus drivers are?
Okay.
Okay. Buses are ours, the bus garage, the facility is ours, the drivers are contracted through SafeLink.
Okay.
That's it?
Okay. Anyone else have any committee reports?
I'm, the Beth Foundation, I guess they had their golf fundraiser on Monday, twenty-fourteen. Twenty-fourteen. Had your, I don't know if it's good, did you go?
I never golf. I just go.
And then they will be voting, they moved their meeting to this Thursday. They'll be voting on the requests from Amy Downberg for three hundred fifty thousand for the technology. And they're going to be looking at some different options, either spreading, spreading it out over two years or going into the adult management, they're going to be voting on that on Thursday morning. Any other information on that?
I think the majority of that is going to be towards flexible seating and kind of tying it into the technology. I think that's the route they kind of are going to go now instead.
Part of it was for the smart boards to.
Correct it. Yep, so it's kind of a mix. I just don't want everyone to think it's.
Technology and flexible seating.
Yep.
Anything else? Thank you. Moving down, public input. Does anyone wish to speak to the board about items concerning the school district or its Moving on, consideration to approve the finance report. Can I hand that out to you?
Yep. Page four in the agenda packet are not too many exciting things to see in the summer. Cash flow work sheet is done through the entire fiscal year. And again, as we have been the last several years, we should stay cash positive through the entire fiscal year, not needing to do any anticipation borrowing. The two checking accounts you see at the top, we have kept the merchants checking account open. And the reason being is community resource, it gives us collateral to about two point two million dollars. Ending with that, we're not going to be the FBI insured. So keeping merchants bank open, not only do we get to keep an account there that is interest-bearing, but also that's where HSA accounts are held for the employees. So when that transaction is put over every fifteenth and thirtieth, there's already cash there automatically for those things to happen. So we're able to use that as kind of a small term or short-term investment area as well. So we have both those accounts open currently. As you go through there, you'll see a lot of lease payments, tech leases take up most of them, you see a couple plus lease payments. So fiscal year is July one and that tends to be when all the money starts going out the door. As we try to get through what we can in the last fiscal year, the new one starts and you start spending some of those funds as they come through. And then there's the payment schedules for those leases. The big payment you see that come off over is about that top quarter, twenty seventeen A, twenty seventeen B, twenty sixteen A, and then the OPEB. And those are debt service payments. And the important part to recognize when we have debt service payments, the August payment is interest only, the February payment is principal and interest. So what you see here are the interest only payments for those debt service. The reason why we have a twenty seventeen A and twenty seventeen B again is not that we have new debt issued, it's that we refunded those bonds for the building of the field house, auditorium improvements to help lower the obligation to the taxpayers. So when the levy comes out, taxpayers should see some relief in the school property tax based on lesser amount of the debt service. Other than that, there's a whole lot of interesting stuff in there, but I can certainly answer whatever question you have.
Second one down says cushion.
I had, I put that in for myself. At the time when I first built the cash flow, I would go home on weekends and I don't forget cash checks throughout the day. So I built that in for myself.
It's a timing thing, when they go in and come out.
Yeah. We were, had to borrow for eight into the patient, a lot of, not as cash flush, I guess, as you'd say there right now. So that was more for myself to make sure that I could make it through a weekend without losing too much sleep. Guess it'd be something I put in my checkbook at home, make sure that I don't overdraft on it.
Maybe between you and Rob, you can just reacquaint me in the middle of the page. We talk about bus lease, number six, number ten, five oh five.
Yep. Bus six and bus ten, we are finally leasing those two buses.
After that, you kind of, it's a rent to own, right?
So once we've, it's essentially the same as a car payment. It's a setup as, it's called a lease payment. So after making this payment, those two buses are owned outright by the district.
Finance, basically, instead of cash outright.
Yep.
Very common to do that one.
And the one beneath us were in phase two of that, it looks like, huh?
If you go down, further down, you'll see number eleven, three oh five. So that was the year after, probably twenty.
I don't know what you said there.
Yeah, took a little bit of time to figure them all through. I think we have seven buses on lease right now. This will take two out. I think we're scheduled this year to not put another bus on lease, but to again task Andy with finding two suitable replacement used buses to get us through so we get on a schedule where our expenditures and budget are pretty consistently flat so that we can keep rotating vehicles through and have quality maintenance vehicles there, but not have these big spikes in four buses, one year, two vans or whatever we want to be the next. So hopefully by getting some used vehicles and tying ourselves through, we can get onto a schedule where we stay pretty cost-effective and avoid the spikes.
Anything else? Mr. Davison, if not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry? Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one, under one motion. In the event any board member wants to discuss a single item, it can and be removed from the agenda for separate type action. You have a chance to look at the minutes? The gifts look slim this month.
I have a question on five 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 nine five, Goodyear County District program change.
We're going to try this.
Yeah. Those, and Katie's on that committee, there were some changes, they settled some of their contracts.
We're typically in that sixty to sixty-four thousand dollar a month range. That bill stays consistent whether we're in session or not with school. It says equalized over twelve months instead of nine. So your transportation contract, you'll see it reduce in some months because there's just not, the routes going out, whereas the end, or the end district is equalized over twelve months.
They are a lot like us. I mean, you'll see changes at the end of the year. If they settle a contract and have to do retro pay or anything like we had to do, you'll see changes at the end of the fiscal year.
And the other one I had was five five six three zero, New Dominion School.
Yep, they don't have a, like a special ed bill, there's nothing you can do with that.
I just want to look.
It's a special education.
Okay.
Bill for a student at high time of.
All right.
How about just the five five six four eight schools then? Was that furniture or?
So Mr. Davison purchased some furniture for classroom use and tables and some chairs. We have some funds up over, we're going to pull together to make sure that I think some math areas are going to get some tables and desks.
They each have ten thousand dollars a year to spend on capital or furniture of that sort, so.
Any other questions on personnel, monthly bills, gift acceptance? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll make a motion. Motion by Kurt?
I'll second it.
Second by Katie. Further discussion?
I would just like to point out one, there's an approval for a leave of absence for a coach in there. Someone has really dedicated their life to our baseball program and just want to thank him for everything he's done. He's going to take a year off to do that. I think it's just important to mention, thank you to Lucky Lindo for his leadership.
We're okay on the contractual.
Yep. The EA is fine with it. We've discussed it with them. We're just following regular leave procedures.
Yep.
Okay, motion and second on the floor, all in favor of the consent agenda.
As long as he comes back, that'll.
That'll be a discussion next year.
All in favor of the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would you pull up the chair in front? We might as well have you right up front with us.
Go to those meetings.
I just really want to thank Greg for being here. When I asked him to come, it was a little, he and I have been at a lot of meetings, we've had a lot of conversations and it's hard to bring all of you down to Public Works to have a meeting there. So I asked Greg to come here just to kind of clarify some of the things on the cul-de-sac so that we could get this settled. As you can tell, they're getting very close to getting to our end here. We need to make some decisions and Greg needs to let them know some decisions on his end as well. I think we've had some great conversation. There's lots of different options that are available from both the city and the school's perspective. Just an update from the last Public Works meeting that happened after our Monday meeting, I sent you all an email that the city and the Public Works Committee did, offered to me half of the cul-de-sac. I thought that that was very good of them to do. It's, it's for their use as well. Their garbage trucks and their, their plows need to turn around. But we also need it from our aspect of safety, you know, those big vehicles coming through our parking lot and kids racing in and out of there. So I think both sides went for that. But there's a lot of questions on where the cul-de-sac can be. There's different methods and that's why I had you be here, because when I see the words G I S and things like that, I don't know what those are. There's options, we can move it thirty feet one way, would be a little more of an inconvenience and, and traffic flow is not going to be as good. But if we wanted to all be on our, or you know, the city's property, we can do that. There's so many different options. So Greg, could you maybe talk about a few of those options?
Well, I brought, I brought the map with, that was from the plan set.
Sure.
That was with the memo earlier.
Two things, would you slide around so the camera could see you as well?
Sure.
And would you let everyone know just exactly what your position is with the city?
All right, I'm Greg Anderson, I'm the consulting city engineer for Cannon Falls. And I'm glad to sit me on this end with the other left-handers. Hope you're meeting each other.
How long have you been the?
I've been working in Cannon Falls since about two thousand and one. I've been the city engineer since about two thousand and five or six. Got the right number, look at that. So, we'll start at the beginning. So the city many years ago put a capital plan together, much like the school has, for their streets. And the East Side Two Project is what this is called, generally Minnesota Street was scheduled to be gone this year. And that included Minnesota Street all the way up to the school and all the way down to Second Street and the few side streets that were done in two thousand and thirteen. At the hearing where the council decided to move ahead with the project, Beth was there and requested the city consider building a cul-de-sac, which is this bubble on the end of the street here. This is Almond, Minnesota, and there's the school, north is up. So we put that in the plan and that's, that was the plan. And over the course of the spring, we've had dialogue about, we're going to do it, not do it, and cost. And I think now we're to the point, as Beth said, we need to know what we're going to build and when. So this is the plan. The cost, the twenty-two, five or whatever it was, twenty-two thousand is the cost to build this versus just putting the street back the way it was. And that includes some storm sewer, that includes this additional curb to make the bubble and the curb on the other side, the school side, to create that barrier. And then there'd be sidewalk, the sidewalk on the north side of parking lot would wrap around the cul-de-sac and then go to the sidewalk on the north side and it'd be one pedestrian crossing there versus the two that are there now, whether people use it or not, make them, but that's the plan. So that's what makes up the cost. And that's over and above just putting the street back the way it was. So we, we've completed the water and sewer in there. They're going to start putting, prepping the street the end of the week. We'll need to know if we're going to do this storm sewer and by the end of next week, we could have curb on that street potentially. We can, we could delay and do a different block if we have to, but you know, we're, we're, they're making good progress, I should say.
For us, no delay would be better if we move ahead because of the projects I have going on. So I'm kind of holding up right now also as well, just so everyone knows. As we see the entrance right now, which is a very narrow one, heading north into the school, how will that change? For me, it's like a one lane going to the north of the school. How does that change?
As you come in that parking lot entrance?
Yes.
It's still two lanes.
We're not, the, the new cul-de-sac is not going to get that far east. It'll be, if you picture this, the current, the sidewalk and the crosswalk on the north side of Minnesota and then the one down in the parking lot is a little farther to the west, the new cul-de-sac curb would be in between those two. It's not going to get any closer, it's not going to pinch that narrow part anymore. It's just going to take out a lot of that pavement and then there'll be some grass there and then the street will be over here and the snowplows and traffic will come in and go around the cul-de-sac and back out. And the school traffic would stay in the parking lot. You would not get on Minnesota Street from the parking lot, you would not get in the parking lot from Minnesota Street unless you jump the curb.
And we do lose seven parking spots, but it looks like almost four of them could be compact parking. So if you have a small car, it'd be okay.
Right. I'll be quiet after this next question. Dave, what do you see in the practicality of all of this or?
You know, you know, talking with some of the engineers that are, were out there and the way that it's set up right now, we're not going to lose any flow of traffic as far as going north to south through the building. What we're, what we're eliminating with this proposal here, I really do like, and that's the fact that Minnesota Street will not be continuing through the middle of our parking lot. I mean, because technically our parking lot is still Minnesota Street till you go out nineteen or, so to eliminate that, what I call pressure point right there, because that's our main drop-off of this building, for as much as I've done to try to eliminate that being a main drop-off, it's not. It's still the main drop-off and all sporting, all the kids that park in the student lot every day go right to that door. It's beneficial from a facility standpoint, I guess is what I could say. It would definitely be beneficial.
Rob has assisted Beth in getting information.
Understand what G I S is.
G I S.
Yeah. The only I'm looking at, you know, and I look at it from a comprehensive perspective, one is the school, but also whether it be a foot or thirty feet, we've got legal descriptions that need to be changed, need to record the changes with the county. I don't know if you've actually surveyed at all who's paying for all those. So I'm just looking at, I know what the cost, you're saying it's twenty-two to build it, but is there some additional cost that we have to have an attorney draft up a new legal description for that change in the property of the school that has to be approved and recorded by both school and by county? And what else are we looking at, if anything?
Well, if you look on the map here, these tick lines, those are the stripes of the north edge of the parking lot. And then this heavy dark line that goes down towards the middle of the page next to the note that says for sidewalk detail, see sheet fifty? That, according to Goodyear County online, is the edge of the right-of-way or the edge of the school parking lot, however you look at it. So this little sliver right here is what would fall on the school property now, but if I were to slide everything east thirty feet, give or take, it'll all be within the city right-of-way, which we can do. Then the cul-de-sac all sits on city, what the G I S, what the county tells me is city property or right-of-way, and we don't have that question.
When I called Redwing, they agreed with that. If he moved it a certain direction, that there would be no conflict with that.
Yeah. The G I S isn't accurate, as far as I know.
Sure.
I mean, the people on the north side of the street would own part of the street according to the county G I S plan.
Well, if you look at the aerial, what we've done is we've tied in irons we found in the field with the county data, the parcel data. So it's a little different than looking at the aerial where the lines go through the garage and stuff like that.
Right, well, and that's when you said the G I S data online, that's what the public sees. So I'm looking at going, I can't really use that very well.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're right. Actually, if you look online, this line is farther one way or the other.
I think you own a part of our parking lot if you look at it that way.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, it's way up. Okay. So this could be moved down and, and made so it would not touch school property?
And then you probably would lose even less stuff.
I like that.
I've, I've just got a question myself. And that is, we're trying to solve a problem right now that, I'm wondering if it's even a problem. You know, if, if we weren't building these, repairing the roads, we would never be addressing the issue?
I think we actually would.
We have been for quite some time.
We have been talking about getting barricades up.
Yes and no. I mean, it's a matter of opinion, I think, as to whether or not that's a safety issue.
I disagree.
Well, that's going to be a matter of disagreement then because I haven't seen anything, you know, and we're trying to make budget and we're trying to find a way to find $12,000. And it seems like sometimes I think we have to just say, you know what, we can't do it right now. I, I know the city likes to have it open because it gives them access to emergency. And it gives three accesses out of that parking lot.
Actually, Jeff McCormick, I just, just he was at the meeting and he would love to see the cul-de-sac there. He very much is in favor of...
I've heard differing opinions then.
Okay, sure. And I can only speak to him because he was, he was at the meeting.
I just don't know if this is something we want to spend our money on right now. It was never an issue before the roads were coming in. We don't have the money. We're looking for it in the budget. We've got other things to budget for where this, I don't think this is a priority right now. I, you know, what's wrong with just roping it off with something to keep them from going across? You know, if that's the issue, we don't want anybody going through there, why, why do we have to make such a big fix for it? And all we have to do is rope it off and don't have anybody come through?
That seems like a bad idea. That doesn't seem like...
And it, it actually would be illegal because the, the vehicles like snowplows and garbage trucks can't get through them. There's, they can't turn around.
Can't we just, when it comes time, can, can they remove that at the time and just come through? Or is that something we can clear out for that time being? You know, take it down, clear it out? Are we making a bigger problem than this really is? I mean, is it really something we have to find money for where it's been doing well for the last 10 years?
Just so you know, he did cut his paving budget to build this in.
Understood.
Sure.
But we're always trying to find reasons to budget where we may not have to right now. You know, we can find it. We always say we can find it. But if we don't need to do it, we don't have to find it.
But we've been dealing with this, the safety portion of this for years.
Has there been a safety issue there?
If somebody gets hit or...
Right, but it could happen anyplace. And I don't, I don't see it as a, as a, you know, being a parent going through there. I haven't seen it as an issue. I really haven't. I mean, you know, it signs, kids, kids are kids and, and things happen and that's very unfortunate. But are we going to be able to control all that? I just haven't seen it as a problem.
Yeah, right. Good.
And we're, we're just, I think we've, we've created something that, we're looking to fix something that never would have been an issue if those roads weren't going through.
It's an opportunity to fix the safety issue.
But if we don't have the money, there's a lot of opportunities out there, but if we don't have the money, we have to stand fast and say, look, we don't have it right now, guys.
Well, yeah, that's what you set aside from the safety.
We'll always say we can find money, but that's not the right way of budgeting for any business.
What do you, because I guess maybe it should be on a different committee, but when we receive the money for this, from the state for safety factors, we already have cameras, we already have the doors, we already have all those systems, getting roughly $18 per student, you know, what, what were you thinking that that money should be spent on?
This is different. This is for the roads here. This is something totally separate. I don't want to be looking at that situation. Every, every situation's different.
Right, but we have to apply for that, those funds, and I have to have something that we're going to do. We could get more cameras, you know, we could get... Some people are using it towards a, an officer in the school, but it doesn't cover it fully, you know, those types of things. So maybe we'll just have to have another conversation what we want to use that money towards then.
But I thought this was come out of his facilities budget because he said $10,000.
It is because it's, it's, you get that money back after. So we have to have a way to pay for it now.
So you're taking from Paul to get to Peter? Is that what we're doing? I mean, the safety wise?
I don't, and I don't know if it's going to be approved through the safety. I mean, I don't know if this can, can be defined as for sure a safety improvement.
Right.
I mean, I don't know that for sure. I don't know if that'll be approved or not.
Yeah, I, I hear Kurt saying that. And I, I guess what we're looking at is, is a potential fix. But at the same point, if we truly wanted to look at safety, we'd cut the entire parking lot off behind the school so no one can drive beyond where our kids come out of school. That would be safe, right?
How could you make deliveries back there?
You're going to have to do it during hours and the kids aren't out. What I'm saying is, I know, you know, we're, we're making this road safe, but we're still not making the parking lot back here where the buses do go, where the parents go, where the teachers go to park. So we're fixing one small area, but we still really haven't fixed everything. And I know safety is a concern in everybody's mind, but... And Kurt, you know, what you said made perfect sense. It could happen anywhere. So if we do this fix and they still get hit in front there because we're still going to the back parking lot, we really didn't fix anything.
Yeah, Katie, I'm sorry we cut you off before. Go ahead.
Um, as a parent of middle school age kids, and I am up there dropping off countless times and picking up.
We're not supposed to.
Nope, I go to the other side, but you know what? My husband doesn't. And the kids are all waiting over the, over out on that side. I have seen countless times where people are slamming on their brakes or you're going to, you're, you're misses between this street and this street. And so, um, and I have seen all of the signage of do not drop off here. Nobody listens. Um, I think this would be a great thing for those parents that are going to drop off. You're dropping off in a cul-de-sac.
But will they? Or will they still go in front of the school drop off doing U-turns tighter and go right back out the way they came?
I think, well, personally, as a parent, I would drop off here, turn around.
Okay, about your husband?
Same thing.
Because he goes, he's not supposed to already.
Right here, they can, they can just pull in and turn out. You're probably going to get a little bit of a line.
And it's like, that's what I mean is, we've made this a little bit tighter so there's one way in and one way out. Whereas now we would have one way in and two ways out. We've just blocked this exit for kids dropping, being dropped off.
But when you're right here, if you have cars coming in this way and cars going this way, this way, at least the kids are only having to look right to left. They're not having to pay attention to this car that's coming down here and it's going to turn one way or the other.
So you're agreeing that we're not doing a full fix, we're doing a partial fix?
Well...
Because we're still not going to be able to fix. I think new problems are going to arise.
But I think that, you know, I think that if the people that are coming back here, it's mainly for whatever's going on back here.
No.
They're not?
People are dropping off here. If this is fully scoot through, drop off kids here. If that's fully drop off here. Sometimes if you got a band concert, choir concert, a basketball game, whatever the event is, the closest door. So they're still going to go back and through there pretty heavily.
Could I just interject and ask Peterson what he feels about the practicality of this conversation? I just, you're the one who deals with this stuff.
Well, my opinion on this entire matter is, is there's a couple of good valid points, gentlemen, that you're making. Are we going to completely fix every problem? Of course not. We'd have to redesign the entire parking lot in the building. You, you can't fix every single problem. You can't stop people from making U-turns in the middle of the parking lot. We all know that. We're not trying to do that. What we're trying to do is take advantage of the simple fact that the city happens to be there right now. Now, are we, do we want to take advantage of that? Yes, we do. Now is our opportunity. If, if I would have known and we could have planned and budgeted, maybe it wouldn't be such as a, a topic. We do have money within our parking lot budget to be able to get us through this, to get, get it going. It's parking lot. That's, that's what it's for. It's part of the parking lot. Is it, is it a safety problem? Not only do I think it is, and that is my opinion, but I have countless amount of video footage to be able to show it too. You have to understand, when the bell rings at the end of a school day, those doors open and those kids come out in every direction out that door. Every parent that's picking up there, every parent that's dropping off, and every student that's leaving the parking lot, all meet at that intersection. We're trying to eliminate multiple exits and entrances. Is it an end-all, fix-all for everything? No. Are we doing what we can? Working with the city, making a reasonable change, you know, at what I consider a reasonable dollar amount? We're doing everything that we can. I think it's a good move. I think it's straight up for the safety of the kids and the public. It's nothing more than that. It's to make it a safer intersection. And I think it's a good solution.
Thank you. Let's pull it back to the board now. Let's continue our conversation here.
I have a question for Greg. When they put the curb hanging, is it going to be what I call, I guess, a standard curb? Or if they do a slope, so if they ever have to utilize that street to get to the backside of the school with a fire truck, would we be able to drive over that curb?
Right now it's planned to be a standard curb and that would prevent them in an emergency to cross.
Mike Geltow was there, so we'll stop him.
Okay.
Well, I know it's true that people do use, but let's continue on it because I do it. It's going to be an inconvenience for me that I can't go down Minnesota Street and, you know, continue over to the school or cut back that way. And that's what people do. And that's why it's dangerous too, because it's a, it's your favorite path.
That's something that Dave and I and Beth and whoever else is on the facilities have talked about for the last three or four years. How, how do we solve that problem? Obviously, one of the, one of the things we tried is building that sign, putting that signage up and... What'd you call that? Block, that road block?
Yeah.
Little road block?
We've done signage. We've done portable signage. We've done cones.
The one thing Tim has put in every single newsletter for the entire year, it's so scary to him. He, it's the only thing he consistently has in his newsletter all along.
And I see the same amount of traffic going into a smaller area, which means it'll be faster and more tough. It might be one less direction, but we're not decreasing the, the number of cars going through. We're decreasing the routes that they can travel. So it'd be like taking a four-lane highway and making it a two-lane highway. There's backups. There's always more congestion. If we could stop 15 or 20% of the cars coming through, I guess I would look at and go, we will solve a problem. I think we're going to create a new problem we don't foresee yet. And we can't unfix it then. The same number of cars going through.
We did have some good news on Almond Street, the alley with Almond. They're going to make that one way. With the project, they're, they're black topping that as well. I was really excited to hear that because that costs none of us anything and it flows those kids out the right way. And then they can't get down to Almond Street. So it slows them down. Because right now they all race out of the parking lot and then fly through that Almond Street alleyway. So I was really excited to hear that. That was a good decision.
At one time we had, uh, two options were thrown at us. One was the cul-de-sac and one was just temporary blockades of some type, concrete, large concrete curbs. And I, I can't remember the numbers, but they were relatively, well, concrete curbs were like half of that cost, but...
The Public Works Committee, almost everyone on there, whether it was Director of Safety, we had the Police Chief there, Public Works Director was there, the new director, all of them were very against that. It's just such a safety factor. Not in favor of barricading anything that can't be driven over or through. Chief McCormick talked about arms that go up and down. But those are expensive too, so.
Folks, we need to make, we don't need to make, but we could make a decision based on the construction completion date here. And consideration to approve $11,000 for Minnesota Street cul-de-sac project. Uh, we, we can make a motion in the second. It can be discussion or whatever behooves you, but...
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion for what?
To, for consideration to approve, to vote, or make a vote of...
Where are you putting it?
To approve.
Where are we putting it? On city property only or on school and city property?
Let's, let's finish the motion and we can continue.
Oh, is that part of the motion though? Where she said, where it's going to be?
A motion to approve.
Minnesota Street cul-de-sac project.
Yeah. Yeah, we can add more to it, but that's the motion.
Use your room for a second and we can expand on that if you need. We have a motion in second. Let's continue our discussion. Rob, tell me again what, what you're saying here.
Well, yeah, I know the cost and that's what I brought up to Beth is typically, you know, if you guys remember when we sold Lastito, there's a $5,000 cost by an attorney because they never transferred the deed from this school district three to school district 252. So what we're going to do is create a cloud on title. If we come into the school district with a cul-de-sac that typically is maintained and owned by the city, we have a conflict of title work, kind of like on a car. We've got a cloud on title, which means we have to clear it up, which means typically a new legal description has to be drafted by an attorney. It has to be recorded and approved by all parties that we've changed that part of the land that's owned, the real estate. So there's typically additional cost. Now, I don't know if there's going to be another survey. If the survey they've done is good enough, uh, but there's usually steps involved. If you're going to sell your house out there, Jerry, and you want to do a property boundary change, you kind of went through it, new legal description, new deed. Same thing here. So if we keep it on city property, don't touch anything regarding the school, we should be able to save all those costs. But if we're going to just put it on, and I don't care if it's a foot into the school district, we literally need to change our legal description or 30 feet. It's all the same. So that's my question is to where's, where's the proposal to put it? On city property or on school property?
And Greg, your, your response to that would be?
We'll just move it a little farther east and we'll stay in the right-of-way.
And you have enough space to do that?
Is there extra expense in that?
No. It's not. It's a minor adjustment.
That's why we want to get it done before they start laying things out down there.
So understanding that, Rob, is that maybe not agreeable, but...
Well, I just want to make it clear in the motion. If we're going to approve a motion or not approve it, what are we truly approving?
Yes.
So we don't forget. Otherwise they come in and knock on some of the school property and go, that's not what we were thinking because we were told that was an option. So we're going to make it crystal clear.
Yep.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so the motion could be amended to include staying on city property?
I think so.
Brenda, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
On the amendment?
Yeah, I could have said that in the first place.
Okay, we have a motion in the second on the floor to approve the $11,000 on Minnesota Street cul-de-sac project pursuant to us staying on a property. Other discussion?
City, city.
City property.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes by a four to two. Correct? Kurt, Rob?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Greg.
Thanks for coming, Greg.
You could stay for the balance of the meeting if you'd like.
He's got that for his council.
Okay, under new business, consideration to approve the medical leave request beginning 9/27 of 18.
Um, first one is for Molly. I always want to call her better, but Mallory? My recommendation is to approve.
I want a question to Kurt.
Motion by Brenda?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve a medical request beginning 9/28 of 18.
This is one day later and it is for Sarah Meney. My recommendation is to approve.
I'll make a motion?
Motion by Kurt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 1819 milk and dairy product bid.
I'm going to make this really easy on you tonight. One company that we've been working with for a very long time gave us a very competitive bid for our milk and it is Wendy's recommendation to go ahead and go again with Hastings Co-op.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Kerry on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion?
Did the price go up or down or is it the same overall?
Same.
Same.
Yeah.
There's escalator clause. There's a lot more information.
It's all, it's all built in there. If you look down at the bottom of your sheet.
Oh.
With the escalator clause, we actually saved a little bit of money last year based on...
But we can't guarantee that.
We can't guarantee it, but we usually budget around $40,000 to $45,000 a year for milk.
This is, this is a great bid.
Makes these and the world's bids. Still competitive.
All in favor of the approval of the dairy bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kerry?
I meant to say aye, yes. She did. She needs to do tonight.
Consideration to approve the resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized board-approved referendum authority.
Right. This is something you've done every year. It's the resolution to the board-approved 300. There are approximately about three school districts in the state that don't use this. But you do need to reauthorize this every, every single year and it is a resolution. So Brenda will have to read that.
First, we will make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized board-approved referendum authority.
That was it.
That's Jerry on the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Katie on the second. Okay, ma'am.
Do I just say to you that first word?
You do, yes. And stating the dollar amount. So number one.
I don't think. I'm on my computer. I don't know.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote for the resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized board-approved referendum authority.
If it is all by the school board of a dependent school district number...
Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, the board has previously authorized a board-approved referendum authority in the amount of $300 per adjusted pupil unit pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 126(c)(17), Subversion 9(a). Keep going.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Girl called Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Katie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve the resolution calling the school district general election.
We do have three seats open for this fall, and so we do need to do another resolution opening up the election. So if you could read...
Make a motion.
Yes, do that first. I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to college for district general election.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob?
Whatever you said.
Any other discussion?
Okay. Could you read one and two? You don't have to do the second paragraphs, but one and two.
This is a roll call for the resolution relating to election of school board members for calling the school district general election. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 252, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, it is necessary for the school district to hold this general election for the purpose of electing three school board members for terms of four years each. Two, the general election is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the 6th of November, 2018. Rob?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
That passes by a six-zero vote. Consideration to approve the 1819 MSBA policy revisions, 2017 legislative changes.
What you'll see, it might be easiest just to look up at the screen. Anytime something legislatively happens, MSBA has to change their policies to align with whatever was passed. So what you'll see up here are the policy numbers and then the legislative recommended changes. It would be my recommendation to always follow MSBA's lead on this. They have attorneys, you know, vet this and look through things, and it really is wise for us to use MSBA's recommendations. So if you'd like to have me open any of them, I know you've had them for a while too, if you'd like to look through. They, again, are just meeting up with legislative language, and sometimes it's so much as a one-word. E-learning days and things like that, the School Calendar 602, those things will impact us, because we're going to be doing bull days next year and things like that. So it would be my recommendation to approve these as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? I would like to add that at the last meeting, I didn't do a very good job on open versus closed, and I will acknowledge that. Sometimes in my haste to move forward on things, I could do better. But that's life, I guess. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay. This is not a resolution, is it?
No.
Other discussion? All in favor of approving these policy revisions with legislative changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the first reading of Policy 722, policy data requests.
Okay, you'll see this for a first reading tonight, and then you'll see the second reading on your August meeting. The policy committee has seen these via email. You also got the attachments ahead of time. So if you have any questions, I can certainly answer those. This is all related to public data requests. I think sometimes you'd be surprised how many people, and Jennifer can probably allude to this. I need the list for the kids. I need their addresses, and I'm going to mail them birthday cards, you know, invites for birthday parties and things like that. You know, we have to follow pretty strict procedures on what can be given out and what can't. So this is just telling you what we can do with the data. It would be my recommendation just to approve this first reading. If you have questions before the second reading, make sure you get those to me, so that I can get that prepared for you at the next meeting.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 722.
Rob on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the first reading of Policy 22, say aye.
Aye.
722. Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 1819 mandatory list of policies.
All right, we're kicking off the new school year, and the mandatory policies are ones that districts have to have in place. Your bullying policy, your hazing policies, all of your, anything related that is mandatory is on this list. We don't do a first and a second reading unless there's been a change, and you've already authorized the ones that were changes. These are, in the principal world, the 500 series is the ones they use all the time. These need to be in place for the first day of school.
I'll make a motion to approve the 201819 mandatory policies.
It's a motion by Brenda.
Such that they are mandatory.
Yeah, they are mandatory.
Motion by Brenda, do you give a second? Anyone?
I'll make a, I'll second.
Jerry on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 1819 annual list of policies.
These are the ones that are... Put them in here. We do approve some family medical leaves tonight. If you have any questions on those, I can open them, if you want to talk about any of them. Any changes or anything, you'll always see a line through them or highlighted. You won't see anything in those, but we can talk about any of those. But those are your annual policies as well. They're the ones that are mandatory.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the 201819 policies.
Motion by Rob, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Consideration to approve the 1819 restrictive procedures policy from GCED.
I believe Lori did put this whole packet in there. It's important that you read this, even though it's GCED and they take a lot of time and effort. You will find lines through anything. Katie, did they review this at your meeting as well? Do you know the restrictive procedures policy?
No. We have a meeting on this Thursday.
Okay, and maybe you're going to do that there as well. As I said, you'll see anything with a line through it has been changed. When I looked through it, I didn't see many changes, but GCED does work really hard. They also train our teachers. So we take their lead, especially with our special education teachers, so... If you have any questions, I can answer them. Our lead Sharon's in the room as well, but it would be our recommendation to approve this policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the 201819 district policy.
Motion from Kurt?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded is from Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the 1819 school contract. By the way, I practiced five times.
Same school, do you correctly have, well, I have it? There's one copy there. There was no sense making changes. There is no changes. It's $10 a student. It'll be approximately $10,000 for the year, depending on how many students are enrolled in the fall, things like that. They do tweak it later, but it would be my recommendation. This is really something the entire school is using, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the school contract for 201819.
Motion by Brenda?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Back to page two. Consideration to approve the 1819 MSBA membership. Pretty standard procedure here.
This is your membership. I think you guys get a lot out of it. Just even inexpensive, well, I should say it's free advice. May not be legal advice, but they guide us through a lot of situations. I think that their mailings and things to you are helpful. I hope this year, whether you're re-on the board again or something, I hope you take advantage of the back-to-school trainings that they have. I think they've got some really good courses for you guys to be the best board members that you can be too. So it would be my recommendation that you continue to belong to MSBA.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to post and hire a 1.0 FTE elementary teacher for 1819.
Well, we had some discussion on this last time, and I'm very in favor of adding another first grade section. We haven't changed much in numbers, but we're kind of getting to that time of the year where we want to make those decisions. You had asked for it to be on the agenda again, so it's on for discussion. Ms. Shapie is also available here. I know you wanted kind of some specific, she's behind Katie or something. So, you know, we have questions for her. We've got some staff members. If you feel more comfortable asking them. The data that we've given, I know, did you share that with the rest of the board, the special ed numbers?
No, I just asked her to bring them to the meeting, basically.
Sounds good.
So we started with 61 at the end of the school year?
Uh huh.
Is that the correct number? And today, we're at?
68.
68. We sit here at the high level of the guidelines that we've established. And I think if the math works out, it's 22.67 or something like that.
I did put it up there too, but you guys approved the new guidelines.
One of the things that's always been unusual for me is, we did set these guidelines, and we all agreed to them, but they're so brief in their concept that I don't know if they take into consideration everything that we need to know before agreeing to the guidelines. And one of the things that I was concerned about is, at the last meeting, we discussed some of our needs students. And, you know, we didn't have the information to say, we knew there were more than average, but we didn't know by what. And with Sharon and Jen here, I'd like them to make a comment at least on that, on those numbers, because I think it's pretty important to know that when we have higher needs numbers, I think that draws the, I don't know how to say that, mainstream child in that classroom maybe gets less attention because of the proportionately high number that we're carrying.
Yep, I would agree. And so just to confirm, with three sections, we're at two staff members of 23 and one with 22. In 1415, our average class size was 22, with four special ed students beginning the year, five ending. In 1516, your average class size is 20, with one special ed student. 1617, your average class size was 21, with four special ed students, ending with six. 1718, your average class size was, we had half with 20 and half with 21, three special ed students ending with four. Our projection for three sections is six special ed students into those three sections, likely ending in more. We have something at the elementary called a TAC team, where we have student concerns brought to a group that can help determine what is going to be best fit for that student, what behavior interventions can you see. You don't bring a special ed student to the TAC meeting, and I think on average, we have each of the four sections of kindergarten had brought one to two students to the TAC team. These are students who have not qualified for special ed yet. So if we go on the high end, that's eight students, low end of another four students, possible maybe at some point in their near future. So this is a good investment, and I know that some of you think it's a good investment. And I think that, you know, if we were in second or third grade, I'd feel a little better about this, but we're not. Those are some golden years there.
I guess if we add seven kids, and it's about $7,000 PPU, is that?
What count?
$9,000.
$9,000.
Just on that basis alone, doesn't the addition of those seven students pay for a new educator? Or is that not right logic?
That's a Josh question, but... Well, you can do that. Keep in mind that you're adding an art section, a music section, you know, those types of things too. So I don't think it's as simple of a question as you're asking, but yes, the revenue would be there, but when you're adding...
But I'm not sure it isn't, because all of these kids are first grade, and we're dealing with first grade. I think art and everything else sits on its own merit. If we're adding first graders and six, and we're saying, but we have other, other things that we have to deal with, that doesn't take into consideration that we added six to an already high level of needs classrooms. And I get the 17 to one, I get the 23 to one, I understand the guidelines, but I think the guidelines sometimes are too simplistic in the approach, because, you know, nowhere here does it talk about our needs kids. So I guess...
Yeah, I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying it isn't always as easy as taking 9,000 times seven kids. It isn't that easy, it's always...
Reality, 11% of the grade is special needs.
Sharon raised her hand. I would like to...
So more and more in recent years, there's been more demands put on the gen ed teacher to try to keep those kids out of special education. It's just the way we're going, and to try to keep kids in the classroom as much as possible. So with the number of kids that were identified in kindergarten, we were able to keep them out of special ed because those gen ed teachers were doing the interventions with those kids to keep them making those gains. When we put that many kids with higher needs, not identified yet, in a bigger class size, that's less time that the teacher can spend with each of them.
So I have a different question.
Uh huh.
We have identified six for special ed needs. How many other students from that class use additional, have additional needs?
Like the RTI and the...
Yes.
So Jennifer talked about that teacher assisting teachers team. That's the first line. If a teacher has a concern about a student, they bring it to that team. They talked about interventions to try with those students, and I think she said there were one to two students in each of the kindergarten classrooms.
In each classroom.
And that doesn't include poor service on average RTI. What would you say?
I had, during my reading block, I would probably have an average of seven students leaving my classroom that needed reading intervention, for example.
Is there a way, and I don't know, is there a way that you can offset that with a para or anything like that that might help instead of a new teacher?
I don't think so when it comes to that basic foundational education. And our paras right now that we're using, like three of our students, three or four.
Three of them have a one-to-one?
One-on-one.
Special education para.
And that is 100% of the time.
Three of the students. Three of the six students.
So it wouldn't hurt, I'm just wondering, is it more, and I don't know, but is it practical? Is it possible that that could work if you bring in another para? Because we don't know what next year might bring, and is it, if it's not, I don't know.
That's additional training out of that para, so...
Wouldn't be one per classroom?
It'd be one each room, yeah.
Because that would definitely equip one too.
Yeah.
Are you meaning a gen ed, general ed para?
I don't know. I don't know how you would handle that. I'm just wondering if that's ever an option.
We thought it was needed.
What's that?
Wherever that para would be best utilized in the situation.
We don't have gen ed paras, right?
We don't have general ed paras right now. Special ed paras, in order to hire more of those, the students, there's a rubric that we have to go through to see that if a student needs that one-on-one para. Otherwise, basically, it's illegal, because then you're using funds for, to pay for a special ed para where a student really doesn't need that person.
I can see where that would be a question, whether we've given a student a para when they're not calling out for it.
Correct, yeah, correct. And the other thing I want to point out is that special ed students are general ed students first. So these teachers are their teachers, number one, and then the special education part comes after. So they are responsible for all of those students in their classroom.
So you said, reading time, seven students leave your class. How many total students did you have in your class?
I had 16. The others had 17.
So you have 17.
And some of those, and then more reading. There was a reading RTI time too, or more students leave during that time. We also have students who need extension activities. And the range of academic level was very great this year. And also will be the kids that are moving.
When you talk about extension, what do you mean by that?
Um, our high... Our high flyers.
More gifted, talented.
Okay, that's.
Enrichment.
I know that terminology.
Yeah.
I think also Sharon, that they might not understand is these three children right now who receive one-on-one special ed services, those are not necessarily your kids who are having a hard time learning how to read. Those are kids that are bolting out of the classroom screaming. Those are behavior needs. So that is why they qualify. It's very difficult to qualify a student to have a one-on-one para. Very difficult in this day and age because, like Sharon said, we don't want to qualify kids for special ed anymore. So that just kind of gets shoved back into our classroom and you're trying to balance fourteen fires. But in this particular class, three of those students have one-to-one paras. This year, we didn't, correct me if I'm wrong.
None of the first graders last year had one-on-one para.
I had three pretty severe learning children who were receiving, receiving special ed, but there were no behaviors attached to those kids. So those kids took a lot of extra time.
And you had no paras for those kids.
Yeah, we've never had classroom paras.
Kids without the paras have major behavior issues.
And Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong with this, but it was under my understanding that most learning disabilities, special needs are identified in the K one-two, right? Like that goes earlier years?
Maybe not identifying.
But they start learning.
That's where we try to hit their, the intervention to try to.
To try and figure out if they have something, right?
Yes, we try to bridge that gap before it gets bigger and bigger as they get older.
So that's why I feel like it's so important for them to have a smaller group at that age because they can have the, they can have, be more focused on those kids that, that need it if they have the time. But when you give them twenty-three in a class, I feel like their time is already divided very thin and they're not going to be able to help those kids that might need just a little bit of extra. And then the kids that are excelling, I don't know, I, you know, in my, in my practice, in my like past, what I notice is those kids that aren't getting those gifted and talented, like the enrichment activities, they don't behave very well once, if they're not being challenged. So then you've got them trying to get their attention and you've got kids who need the extra help. And then you've got the kids that don't necessarily need that extra help. But they need, they need to keep growing. So I just feel like it's a, it would be a wise decision to allow them to go to a smaller group.
I have a different question and I want to like a Debbie Dunbar, by any means.
Yeah.
So, if, if we add a teacher in lesson classes to say sixteen, seventeen kids a class?
What would it be right now? It would be seventeen, right?
It would be seventeen, no, one is sixteen. I had a seventeen and one would have, no, it would be seventeen.
Sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, yep.
Sixteen, sixteen, seventeen.
What do you do with those classes as a progress in grades? So when you're hitting third, fourth, fifth grade, are we still looking at sixteen, seventeen kids a grade? Or do we change?
Then we look into.
Adjusting.
Adjusting it.
Teachers per grade.
Because like, I, I know a lot of the teachers have mentioned this, once you get up to that like third, fourth grade, the, it's, they're different, their cognitive abilities are a lot higher. They don't, they're not, you know, they're able to handle a little bit more. They're able to handle a little more independent learning. They're able to do things differently. They still have those RTI availabilities for the ones who need it still. Because there are going to be several that probably will still need that.
Right.
But they have that available ability to be pulled out of class. So I just feel, I don't know, correct me if I'm saying this here wrong.
Yeah, so it would be four classes of seventeen.
Right, that's what I thought I saw.
And that would be seventeen across the board.
Considering that on day one, which always happens.
Yes.
People realize school is starting.
Yes, or in August.
Go open the door and say, I'd like to sign up Johnny for the class.
Do we typically get some late?
Um, yes.
Secretaries come back in August and that's when we start getting.
You don't want to hire someone?
You know, I try and hire somewhere.
I have three tours already scheduled for next week.
I just, I, I think, and I also think, what if we add them in the middle of the year? I mean, we moved to in the middle of the year. There are several times that that happens. You're not going to be, I don't, I would hate to see a classroom go to like twenty-four. You'd be above your thing and then, but you're not going to split up the group mid-year. That's detrimental to all of them.
That'd be an interesting conversation with a parent.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I, you know, most parents would not want that to happen because that's just a, you'd be starting all over.
This past year, I had six new kids to the district in my classroom, this last year, six.
We can continue the conversation. Let's, let's motion in second, we can continue discussion.
I'll make a motion and consider to post and hire a one-point-oh FTE elementary teacher.
Jerry on the motion, Brenda on the second. Okay, continue.
So, we're basing our numbers off of last year's kindergarteners classes far as what we've got for special needs and everything. And those typically never will change and those kids are staying in the district, nothing.
Those six kids, yes, those six kids are not transient kids. They're, they're grown-up here in this community.
Yeah, I think if that were, if it was second grade, it'd be, we'd be a little more comfortable with those numbers around the twenty-two, twenty-three a bit. For first grade, I think we want to be closer to the kindergarten numbers. I mean, we'd be over the twenty-one in all three classes if we were to go with three.
Certainly one of the things that binds us.
Because of the special needs we have.
One of the things that binds us is, is our guidelines to some degree. But they are so simplistic in nature that doesn't take a lot of things into consideration.
And again, they are just guidelines.
And you have to take, I think we should listen to the teachers and we've been very.
And like I said, my, my concern is as they get older, then what do we do? Because, you know, if you look at sixteen, seventeen kids per, per class.
Right.
Then people are going, oh, oh.
But as they get older, but as they get older.
You don't.
They can handle, I mean, you're thinking of a first grade classroom, they're still learning to be able to line up at the door and, and walk through the hallway. I mean, when, when you, it gives me anxiety to think of twenty-four kids walking through a hallway behind one teacher.
Us too.
And staying in a line and not going, and not wandering or, you know, just being like, oh, I see something over there and there they go. Their cognitive ability is just not like super.
Easily distracted.
Yeah, they're very, very squirrel driven.
Jerry, the other thing to keep in mind is that, that our hope is that that, that gap lessens as they get older.
Right.
So, and, and I've talked to numerous parents who have had students who have had to get Title One help, Chapter One help when they're younger, and the kids have caught up. By, by second grade, they're caught up. Then you can have the bigger numbers in the classrooms.
And that's where, if you don't build that foundation, you lose it there.
Yeah, if we lose it in those beginning stages, then.
It's one opportunity we have.
Yeah, to, to bridge that gap. And I feel like it's, I don't know.
If, if we hold numbers current and we, and we add this position, as they progress in age and numbers don't change, and we, we have to start maybe possibly shifting teachers.
Oh, absolutely.
Once the E A spin on that, it's how big issues that can be with.
Well, what if we have to remove a section because the next person?
Would you mean adding a section after the school year starts?
Remove, shifting teacher as they get older. So if you have, say, ten of fourth grade and they're sixteen.
The contract is well laid out as far as.
C and R.
I know the answer, but I need to ask the question.
Sure.
I see first grade going away if the section gets smaller again next year. We wouldn't shuffle, we would just remove the teacher, correct?
Or you'd have it, or I've seen other schools do it where the, where they do that, they have like that bubble that goes through and they have to just shift around to move around the bubble.
But you're, you're basing off something that we have no idea. The projection models right now are showing one-hundred-and-sixteen for kindergarten next year, so. And that has stayed, both Jake and I have monitored it and it's still staying right at that number. So, we'll see.
The projection shows it's sixty-seven either.
Yeah.
But I am definitely in agreement that as this grade that we're talking about right now would get to those higher levels, that we would condense it to three sections when they're able to handle it.
Team, you ready to vote?
I think so.
I think with the, the guidelines, as we call them, there's a lot of thought. I mean, I believe this took about six months for us to go through and come to.
And we just updated again this last year, so it was good.
Yes. I think there's a lot of merit behind them. I think as we've done, we've looked at a lot of studies regarding this. I think it would be good for us to go back and visit and we can put some more thought behind them, I guess. Otherwise, if we can, for any reason, we could, we could just throw it out the window. Then it might as well not happen at all. So I would like to see them with more consideration of what students are going through the school modifying.
More specific.
Expand the language.
Like expand the language.
There are exceptions.
Well, I mean, if this class was like any other class, we probably wouldn't have this discussion. Not purely on numbers, but because of the special needs as well, correct? I would agree. Am I correct in that or am I not correct? That if we hit the same special needs as we have for the last three or four years, but our numbers of kids were the same, this wouldn't be a discussion.
Oh, I think we would still discuss it because we're still.
So you still want to fight the numbers that we have up there if nothing else changed?
I still think I would support low class sizes in Cannon Falls schools. I'm not saying I'm fighting the number.
We'd still be at twenty-three, but I'm just saying is what changed issue over the other years? Is that, is caused, that's what, I'm looking at something to ground us to say, what's caused the change this year? Is it the special needs or is it purely that we're at twenty-three, where we're, where we said we would go? What's the cause for the conversation? So that next year, the classes are twenty-one, twenty-two, and if we've got two or three more additional needs, do we have the conversation again or do we say our numbers are old enough, we don't need to? Where's this checks and balances of the process?
I think you have to take it class by class.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're dealing with is whether we're going to add a one-point-oh. I think that Rob's statement is, is valid, that we need to make another item on our agenda for future conversation about where we're going with here.
Otherwise, just throw it away. It's, it's useless if we can't stick to it for something.
And I'll kind of call on it. And when we do, I would suggest to have Jen or some elementary staff involved in that process.
No, I don't disagree with that at all. I would, I just like to, we worked hard on this, I thought we felt pretty comfortable with it. We're not going high-grade classes. At least when we approved this, we didn't feel that way. We felt we were still a low-class school. And that was something that Beth could get behind as far as tours and, and kids moving in. So I think we put a lot behind this. I don't want us to just throw it away now.
Right.
I'd like to see it become better.
Yeah, but to answer your, I think your original question, I think the conversation came up, not just based off our numbers, but I think the special needs of the classes. That's why this is at the table tonight.
Right, and it's what I was trying to get.
Yeah.
I mean, we had the conversation a month ago and the numbers were close, but we never really talked more about the special needs at that point. So we're just getting ready to bring it back on the agenda, so if we.
Well, as I've stated before, I, I never think it's overly appropriate to talk about the different, you know, different demographics of any class. I, I always like to just look at the numbers and, you know, Sharon and I have talked about that as well. You know, I can give off the wrong impression of a certain grade or anything like that. I've never been a big fan of talking about populations in each group. It gets reported, it, it gets conveyed to parents that are moving to our town different ways and they misunderstand. One of the families that's moving here has already had that conversation. They've caught, you know, wind of this and things like that. So I just think it's important to talk about the numbers and take recommendations from your staff that's had those kids and things like that. And yeah, following the policy, I, I do, I back it. I think there's unique things, but I, I guess, I've just never been a fan of looking at specific populations in any, in any grade level. I, I think it can be not the best data to look at, so.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to post and hire a one-point-oh. I think that should, that should be our topic of conversation. I really agree with Rob. We need, we put this up here for a reason. And we need to expand on the language or expand on the thoughts or disregard it entirely.
Correct.
But at this point in time, there's a motion, a second on the floor to post and hire a one-point-oh elementary teacher for the upcoming year. All in favor of such, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. And Kurt's a second. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve a quote for painting the bus garage.
If you look at the back page, I know, it's so ugly, I know. If you look at the back page of your five-year plan, this is the year fiscal year nineteen, painting the bus garage, we had budgeted fifteen thousand. And the quote came in at fourteen-five-twenty. We did have another quote come in at eight thousand, but they don't, they don't take care of the rest. They only do one coat of paint and no primer. This is two coats of primer and paint, and they fix the steel that is broken. They also remove all the rotten garage door jams and replace them. And they'll replace the old tin. So this is the silver portion, the Kwanzaa. We have some other good news, that Dakota County Electric is donating six thousand dollars to improvements to facilities. It's the north side as you drive in and everyone knows it's kind of the north side eyesore. I mean, this won't completely fix it, but we should do our part if we can to help them. But with that, that funding coming in to help with that, they stopped in, what, two weeks ago, Josh? To give us that news? So they'll be presenting a check here at the board meeting, so we'll probably wait till then to announce that. But that can be used towards that project as well. But you do have in your five-year plan that built in, so this isn't, shouldn't be a surprise. But the quote came in right where we kind of thought it would. It's up to you on this, this isn't, it, it is something we either need to fix the rust because it's going to continue to rust and create holes. We need to do something, so.
And this is budgeted money.
And it says budgeted money. With some funding coming in behind it as well.
This looks terrible.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote for painting the bus garage.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Josh, are we getting down to the end of things, are we?
We don't yet.
I think we are ready from the board.
I, I sent you this earlier, I just want to make sure you have a hard copy of it. I normally don't run my educational updates by you. If you kind of follow, I either do it every month or every other month, especially in the summer. One of those can go to Ken as well. This letter will be going out. I just want to make sure that everyone on this board understands what we are doing with our new safety program. I sent you the list of all of the people, a couple of them in the room, Lisa, Brian, Jennifer had to leave, Dave, myself, are all a part of the new Alice training that we're going to be having, our entire staff, not just teachers, not just bus drivers. It's not, it's going to be the entire staff. We feel very strongly about this. I'll be presenting at the triad meeting on August eighth in conjunction with the Goodhue County Sheriff, McNerlan. And we're really, really excited about moving in this direction. We feel very strongly about it and, and excited to get the staff trained as well. This outlines what will happen. We'll have some community nights after it gets going. It's important to train our staff first and then you start training the kids, how Ms. Sussker trains her kids and how Brian Swanson trains his kids, or they're going to be different. And when they learn that, it's the different ages of the kids and what they can, what they can take from that. So I'm really excited about, I just, because this can be, I don't want to say controversial, I just want to make sure that this board really understands that we're moving in a strong direction. We are no longer going to have kids huddle in a corner and hide. All the research shows that isn't the right thing to do and we've learned a lot from that. I mean, I'm not saying we were doing anything wrong. We were doing what we were told to do. And now with this new training, the kids, the staff, whether it's a, a bus driver, it's a para or someone working in the kitchen, they're going to feel really comfortable if an intruder comes into our building and what we're going to do. And they're going to be confident in what they're going to do. No one's required to do one thing. It, it isn't, you have to do it this way. It gives everyone options on what they should do. And so we're really excited about it. The parents that have called me about it, after talking to them, at first they're a little nervous about it. They feel, you know, their child shouldn't have to throw a stapler at an intruder. But we know that those distractions are what can save lives, you know, those types of things. So this letter will be going out, I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that. So read it this week sometime, give me feedback before I send it in to the beacon. I'll go from there. Yeah, he won't turn it in, he knows. Right, Ken? He's not listening to me.
Okay, information for the next board meeting, we've got August twenty-seventh and I'm guessing at that time, we'll be discussing upcoming goals that will be on the agenda. Set truth and taxation dates, approval of the mentor program, and anything else that you'd like to add for the cause. So, at this point in time, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
How many motions?
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.